I'm calling to order the February 12th, 2024, meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Select Board is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, dial 408-650-3123 with access code 235235861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Public Television. Is there anyone else in the room recording? Seeing none, can you please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we are. Under God, in thy name, we declare justice for all.
Is that me? At this time, we would need a motion to move into an executive session in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3. We would need to deliberate upon matters which, if done in an open meeting, would be detrimental to the detrimentally affect the position of the town regarding strategy with respect to litigation to come out of executive session. And then we would be in an open meeting. This is a, is there a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
This would be a roll call vote, Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
The Chair is a yes as well. Open meeting may have detrimental effects on the negotiating position of the public body relative to strategy with respect to litigation, and that the board will come out of executive session and reconvene in open meeting.
You want to let the people know that we're going into executives? And we should be around 6:30.
Okay. So, everyone in the audience, we're moving into executive session, which means we are heading upstairs. You are, can stay in this room, and we will resume our meeting at 6:30. Okay, so we are reconvening in open session. Just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anybody else in the room recording? Seeing none, I just wanted to make a quick announcement that there is overflow in the planning boardroom, so if you're looking for seating, there should maybe some available And that we're allowing Attorney Love to make a presentation. It is not a public hearing, so if you would like to be heard, you can sign up for public comment. And there's signup sheets right up here on this desk. Is Attorney Love here? Okay. Nope, you can either here or at the desk, whatever's easier for you. And you could just state your name, and you can begin your presentation.
Thank you. So, good evening. My name is Jacob Love, and I'm a staff attorney at Lawyers for Civil Rights, a nonprofit legal advocacy organization based in Massachusetts. I'm here to speak on behalf of the residents of two of Auburn's mobile home parks, American Mobile Home Park and Whispering Pine Estates, many of whom are in attendance with me, as you can see. Before I get into the substance, I just want to thank this body for graciously giving me the opportunity to speak. I know there's a full agenda, so I'll try and be concise. As this body, and no doubt everyone in this room is aware, Massachusetts is in the midst of an affordable housing crisis. There simply aren't enough homes being produced to meet soaring housing demand from Commonwealth residents, which has resulted in stratospheric rent and home prices. This isn't just a problem in greater Boston. Cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth, including Worcester and its suburbs, are feeling the squeeze. And as if that weren't bad enough by itself, we're also in the middle of a cost of living crisis, with everyday expenses like groceries, childcare, gasoline, electricity, and heating all through the roof. These dual crises and the accompanying increase in costs create extreme hardship for folks who are elderly, disabled, and living on fixed incomes. This class of people is particularly vulnerable because they lack the flexibility of those in the workforce who are able to supplement their income through extra work. And it's much more difficult for those who are elderly or sick to cut back on spending as they often have to pay for things like life-saving medication. That brings us to the residents of the two mobile home parks. As the letter I sent this body on January 17th outlines in great detail, the vast majority of park residents fall into this class of vulnerable people. Many of them are living at the parks because it was the most affordable housing option available to them as they attempt to navigate retirement. However, thanks to the park's owner, Parakeet Communities, things have changed dramatically in the past year. Not only has Parakeet cut back on providing essential and legally required services like snow removal, trash collection, and the provision of oil that residents must have to heat their homes, but it has also raised rents astronomically. At the end of last year, Parakeet sent residents new take-it-or-leave-it lease offers that raised rents by 25% to 40%, hundreds of dollars in many cases. These increases are unconscionable and simply cost prohibitive for a lot of park residents. Things have gotten so bad for some folks that a few residents of American Mobile Home Park have taken it upon themselves to create a food pantry to make sure that their hardest-hit neighbors have access to essentials like toilet paper and microwaveable meals. This absolutely should not be necessary, but it is. In order to pay the increased rent and stay in their homes during winter, some residents have had no choice but to cut back on basic necessities. And even with the assistance from Good Samaritan neighbors, it's still not going to be enough for lots of people to make ends meet in the long term. Residents who can't afford their rent will likely face eviction, which is extremely problematic because low-income people in Massachusetts, especially those on fixed incomes, have fleeting few housing alternatives available to them. The people at these parks should not be forced out onto the street in the freezing cold. They should not be expendable in the pursuit of higher profits. With that in mind, we're calling on this body to use the authority vested in it under state law to take bold, decisive action to protect mobile home residents. There are hundreds of people, hundreds of voters, living at just these two parks, and there are other parks in town whose residents could benefit from legislative intervention. The town can and should enact a rent control ordinance that would allow it to monitor rent increases at mobile home parks and veto unreasonable increases like the ones that we've seen at these two parks. Many towns in Massachusetts have enacted these local laws and implemented them successfully, so the Town of Auburn would not be going out on a limb. And importantly, the town would not have to enact broad rent control. Rent control ordinances are only permitted in the Commonwealth in the mobile home context. That's because the state legislature has recognized that the folks who live in these parks are particularly vulnerable to the exact kind of exploitation that we're seeing at American and Whispering Pine. So with all of that said, I urge this body to strongly consider enacting a rent control ordinance, creating a rent control board with the power to regulate mobile home park rents. Lawyers for Civil Rights and park residents, everyone here today, are eager to work with the town on this initiative and to help in any way possible. The safety of many of Auburn residents depends on the town's response going forward, and we hope the town will do whatever it takes to preserve constituent health and wellness. I'm happy to answer any specific questions you have, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions? I have a couple of quick questions. Are there any legislative options at this time for rent control?
What do you mean by options?
Is there anything pending in the State House or Senate?
That's a difficult question. I'm not sure if any other municipalities currently have rent control ordinances pending before the state legislature, but there are 20-plus municipalities in Massachusetts that have already enacted rent control. It's easy to find those ordinances. They're all very similar to each other, and the town, its town council, this body would be able to model any ordinance that it was interested in passing off of those other ordinances that are already in effect.
Thank you. I just have one other question. Is there a possibility for 40B for mobile home parks?
Well, so 40B is sort of a different statute, and it's sort of on a separate track from what we're requesting. 40B requires towns to meet that 10% subsidized housing threshold, and it affects what happens at zoning boards of appeals and the permitting process and the zoning process. I think this is a totally separate ordinance. We at Lawyers for Civil Rights are very pro-40B. We think it's an important statute. We think that having 10-plus percent of the housing in any municipality subsidized is a good thing, but that's not what's going to help these folks right now. Right now, there's a big national company that's come in and decided that it wants to raise rents to increase profits, and the only way to prevent that and to prevent it from happening to other parks going forward and to prevent the increases from getting higher and higher as we go forward is to enact rent control to allow the town to at least be able to monitor the increases. So the way that it typically works is that, once there's a rent control board in place, a company that wants to increase the rent at a mobile home park would have to submit the proposed increase to the rent control board in advance, giving the rent control board an opportunity to evaluate whether that increase is a fair market increase or whether or not it's unreasonable. The town would then have veto power, the board, the rent control board would have veto power, and could go back to the company and say, "These increases are far too high. You have to lower them."
Yeah, I'm not as familiar with mobile homes, but is there a mobile home association, like a condo association, where they work with the owner and negotiate that?
That is possible. They can organize tenant associations at mobile home parks. It's definitely not as common at mobile home parks as it is at condo associations, though.
And then the liability on the rent control, right? So, any increase that is negated, it is on the town to make up that difference?
No, no. So the town basically has veto authority on increases that are above what it considers to be fair market rent increases. And so essentially, they could just tell the company, the landlord, "No, you can't increase the rents this much. We think fair market is X percent this year, and you can't raise rents more than that." So it would not be on the town to cover any kind of difference. There would be no fiscal responsibility on part of the town.
And are you currently litigating with the owner of the mobile home parks?
We've been in contact with the owner of the mobile home park and are hoping and expecting to be able to negotiate with them on these rent increases, but that, we don't think that that should stop this body from enacting rent control. Regardless of what happens in our negotiations with Parakeet, we think it's imperative that this body take action, bring rent control to Auburn to prevent this from happening in the future. It's not just about the folks that are here today. It's about mobile home park residents being able to live in Auburn going forward, to be able to stay in their homes, to be able to avoid homelessness. And so it's, as much as it's about helping these folks today, it's also a preventative measure from what's happening to them, happening to other mobile home residents going forward.
My reading of this statute is it's voluntary. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, taking, for instance, what, normally, nobody wants to hear me, and now the machine wants to talk back to me. I forgot my point. So, Parakeet, according to you, is difficult to deal with. Is that a fair statement?
That's been the experience of the residents at the parks, I would say, yes.
Okay. So what incentive would the park have to enter into a voluntary rent control agreement?
So the park wouldn't be responsible for entering into any kind of agreement. So this body would pass an ordinance that it would enforce. The parks, the park residents would have no responsibility at all. It would be a municipal, so like, just like the planning board or the zoning board, it would be a board set up, its members would be appointed, most likely by this body, and they would monitor rent increases at the parks. The residents would have no responsibility for that.
So, Madam Chair, I have a question, because I know we all got something from the town planner, so I think I need to hear from town administration on this, because my understanding from what I read was this is voluntary. We don't pass ordinances, we have a bylaw, so we have to go to town meeting.
Sure, a local law, yeah. Regardless of what you call it, a bylaw, an ordinance, depending on the town charter for the specific town, it's obviously, the specific municipal process is always different based on the town charter. But yeah, it would be a local law, a local municipal law, and it would only be effective in Auburn.
Madam Chair, before we go to town administration, just one more question. So, provided what you're saying is going to happen, if we adopt this, if the town decides to adopt this, is there litigation when things are denied? So the town or whomever says, "This isn't fair market," what is the percentage of litigation in those situations?
I don't have those statistics, so I can't tell you off the top of my head, but I have not seen any litigation in this specific space, so I'm not familiar with it. I don't think it happens often, but that's anecdotal. I don't have the stats in front of me.
Thank you. Before we go to town administration, the attorney from Parakeet is on the Zoom and would like to be heard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Robert Kraus. On behalf of Parakeet Communities, I was recently engaged. I'm out of Braintree, Massachusetts. I've been involved in manufactured housing probably for over 30 years, first when I served as a state representative from the South Shore. To answer your questions about rent control, and then I'll go backward, rent control, as you said, is a local option. So it would have to go to town meeting, then it would go to the legislature, and then ultimately return to the community for the adoption of rules and regulations or a bylaw. That is not a quick process. And we have to put this in the context of what's going on here. There are eight manufactured housing communities in Auburn. One is a cooperative. I'm working closely with Parakeet, and in fact, I've communicated a number of times with Attorney Love, that we want to reassess what we've done by way of rents, and we will have information to share not only with him, but the residents. We understand that some of the processes that we may have adopted are, need to be reevaluated. I would tell you that rent control is not a panacea. It's not a cure-all. In fact, as Attorney Love indicated, there are three factors that typically go into rent control: the fair market value of the property, the cost of first-position money, and the expenses on the park. And the formula works like this: fair market value, which can be an appraisal or an assessment, but usually an appraisal, times that percentage, which allows a fair rate of return to the owner-operator, plus the expenses divided by the number of units, divided by the number of months in a year, twelve, and you come up with the rent. So in fact, in many instances, mathematically speaking, the rents can go up under a rent control scenario. Attorney Love is inaccurate when he says that this is a simple figure-out-the-percentage-and-let-it-increase. That's not accurate. And there are, I think, 26 communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that have adopted rent control, other than 351 cities and towns, and there are, I think, about 100 communities that have manufactured housing. These are litigated all the time. These matters, in fact, one, I think, was that Town of Rockland spent 10 years in the federal district court. So it's inaccurate to say it's quick, it's inaccurate to say that it's a fix, and it's inaccurate to believe that this is the best approach to trying to address this issue. It can be a very costly matter for the town. And that's particularly true in this instance because we're willing to discuss matters. We received a letter from Attorney Love, and I spoke to him, and then I responded to him, and we're preparing a response letter. Remember, there are two categories of residents in American, because that's the letter that he wrote to us with respect to his issues about rent. One, there are those who own their homes and rent the site, and then there are renters. And in the context of renters, one has to try to assess it in comparison to what it costs to get an apartment in the Town of Auburn. Now, I understand that there's a crisis in affordable housing in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as there is throughout the United States. Just to be sure, and I'm sure everybody understands this, Parakeet and the other owner-operators in the Town of Auburn are not government-subsidized entities. They try to operate their communities in providing opportunities for residents to the residents in a fair and just way, and that's what we're talking about doing. The immediate steps to address this is not vilifying Parakeet and fighting this in the newspapers and in front of your board. That's not an effective way to do this. Attorney Love may think that that's a good leverage point, but in fact, that's really not going to produce, I think, the results that he, and more particularly, the residents in these communities want. In fact, I've asked Attorney Love several occasions who he represents, and it really doesn't really matter. The residents in both parks have an issue with rents, and as I've said many times, we are going to adjust and consider our options for coming to a peaceful resolution with our residents.
I think, I'm gonna stop you there.
Again, I think that, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop you there. Thank you for your comments. I think the board would like to hear from Dr. Bernard. Sure. Did you want two questions?
Yeah. I know you provided us a brief, Adam, and my takeaway from that was this is a voluntary situation. There could be a subsidy required from the town, and there could be litigation. Now Attorney Love is saying something else, so I'm, it could be that I took something wrong, so I just wanted to...
From my reading of the text of MGL 40P, which I believe you have, it did state voluntary was voluntary, and there is possibly a subsidized portion of it, depending on how a bylaw would be eventually approved by the town. So that was my interpretation. It says clearly in the Section C, I believe it was, a 40P that was voluntary. So that's where I got that information from.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Do board members have any additional questions?
I have a question. I'm not sure if this is for our planner, but if, what recourse does, if we had a rent control board, what recourse does the owner of the park have if they disagree with the rents that the board would set?
From my communication with some of the other towns, including Rockland, it's usually litigation seems to be the way it goes.
Okay. Litigation, thank you.
Are there any additional questions? I would like to thank you for your presentation. We will certainly take this into consideration. If anybody would like to make a public comment, we have a second public comment here session near the end of our meeting, so if you wanted to stay and make a public comment, you're welcome to do that as well. We just ask that you sign up. Thank you.
Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are going to move along to Section 6B, the Common Vic Troller's License. This is a public hearing, so we would need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Chair is a yes as well. Is the representative from Rodell Partners available?
Yes, good evening. I'm here, thank you.
If you want to, I'm just gonna give a few minutes for the people that are choosing to leave, to depart. So we had a motion to open the public hearing, and we're gonna resume the meeting. The individual from Rodell Partners is on the Zoom, so if you just wanted to give us a little bit of information?
My name is Steve Patton. I'm the Regional Director of Operations for Rodell Companies. We are a private hotel ownership and management company based out of Wilton, New Hampshire. We own and operate the Holiday Inn Express there, located at 10 Johnson Street in Auburn, Massachusetts, from when we constructed it quite a few years ago. My understanding is that we filled out the application for this license so we can continue to operate our complimentary breakfast program, which is a brand standard from Intercontinental Hotel Group, to run and operate a Holiday Inn Express.
Thank you. Are there any public comments for this hearing?
Excuse me, if you'd just ask a couple of questions.
For the Vic Troller's License. Do board members have any questions?
I thought this was something that was new. Is this a renewal of a, of a application or a permit?
Madam Chair, Ms. Coils is gonna get up and speak on this.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Darlene Coil from Department of Development and Inspeccional Services. For this application, the hotel does have a eating area where patrons can sit down, therefore it does need a Common Vic license. It was discovered at renewal time, when the license fee came in, that this particular hotel did not have one. So just a clerical error. We're hoping that the board does approve. We recommend approval. The food permits are in order. The Common Vic would be the final piece of that, and they do have their hotel motel license already.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Chair is a yes as well. Is there a motion on the license?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements to the state and town in any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Fair to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much for joining. We have a second public hearing for a flammable storage license. There a motion to open the hearing?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Chair is a yes as well. Is there someone here from Republic Services?
My name is Paul DeLeo from DeLeo Gas, located out of Worcester, Massachusetts, and we also have Ryan here from Republic Services in terms of the application for 13 Hardscrabble Road for the total amount of 6,480 gallons.
Does anybody from the public have any questions? Do board members have any questions?
Yes. What's being stored in the containers?
Yes, sorry, propane.
Propane?
Yes. So currently, on Hardscrabble Road, there, previously, there was a large storage tank that had an underground pipeline that fed about five buildings. That tank is not, no longer being used, and we're trying to eliminate the underground gas lines that are there. So we're basically separating each building to have its own storage. The other buildings have already been changed over to having their own systems, but the large casella building in the back needs large propane tanks to be able to supply the heat for that building, so that's the reason for the application for this current parcel and address.
Okay, so it sounds like it's just to heat the buildings. It's not anything to do with recycling or waste products or anything?
Correct, yep. It's just to heat the casella building, yep.
All right, thank you.
Paul?
Just have one question about inspections of these devices. How often does the gas company inspect the equipment of these type of?
So, so on the original install, you know, there'd be an inspection from our company. The plumbing department will also be out to inspect all the gas lines, and also the fire department will be out to inspect the, install the propane tanks and crash protection around the propane tanks. We're also required to do a fire safety analysis, which has been reviewed by the Auburn Fire Department, and if there's, in case of emergency... And if there's, in case of emergency, and our drivers are trained to do a visual inspection or an inspection when we're making deliveries to these tanks. We expect to do delivery at least once a month in the winter months. So typically, it's done every time we're doing a delivery.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Do board members have any additional questions? Is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Is there a motion on the license?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon it. Fair to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed on the license.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Have a good night.
We're moving along to number seven, departmental items. There's an update on fire headquarters.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, before the chief outlines some details on this item, as a result of the vote that was taken by town meeting that appropriated money for the purchase of property currently where Chucks is operating out of, we began to do some Phase 1, which is currently underway. Those results were expected probably in about three weeks. And that's going to result in some preliminary design work that's already been authorized by town meeting for a rendering of both the fire headquarters with the potential of a police headquarters in the future. As a result of that, I think the chief wants to underscore the fact that we really do not want to rush this project. There's a lot of work that still needs to be done. The clock is ticking. Time is limited. I know initially we said we wanted to bring something to the voters in the annual town election this May. We feel as though that timeline is somewhat aggressive. We want to give our residents an opportunity to, we want an opportunity to educate them, to ask questions, to learn more about the project itself, and we just believe the timeline is too tight to do that. Is that accurate, Chief?
It is. Thank you. Like we said, once the land vote happened and we kind of sat down and looked at everything that needed to take place between now and May, the reality is, in our conversations with Tecton, by the time we got conceptual drawings back, a solid number from the professional estimator, you know, we were looking at potentially three weeks, you know, before we were pushing May. It's just not enough time, and, you know, we don't want to rush it like that. I've currently already, I've written the RFP for the demolition companies. I'm in the process right now of writing the scope of work for the demolition that ultimately will be approved by council. So those two documents alone, you know, probably won't be written and reviewed for another, you know, 30 days. So I concur with the manager's statement that I think trying to rush it to May, I think is too aggressive. So our recommendation would be to at least push that off a year and shoot for May of 2025 for a ballot vote.
Do board members have any questions? Thank you so much for the update.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along, there are no communications. We do have some select board general items as number nine. There's a vote to open the warrant for the May 7th Annual Town Meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. The second item is a vote to close the warrant for Monday, March 4.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we close the Annual Town Meeting warrant on Monday, May 4 at 6:00 PM.
March 4.
Did I say?
Thank you. Yes, March.
March 4. I apologize.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. There are no proclamations or recognitions. There are some gift acceptances. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the gift acceptance from Rebecca Johnson to the Fire Department gift account with gratitude in the amount of $100.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Is there a motion on the second gift acceptance?
I'd make a motion that we accept with gratitude to the Fire Department gift account from Cirilla and Steve Montville in the amount of $50.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. And then the final gift acceptance.
I'll make a motion that we accept with gratitude and let a letter be prepared for the chairman's signature to the Fire Department gift account in the amount of $1,368 annually from MyBox Storage.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. I'm going to turn it over to the town manager for an update on the opioid settlement funds.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was asked by a board member to provide an update as it relates to the opioid settlement proceeds the town has received as a result of the Boston Globe inquiry and a recent article that you may have seen in the TNG in which Ms. Coyle and I gave an interview to the TNG. I provided a memo or a letter to the board dated February 6, which I would like to read. And so to date, the town has received $134,274 as it relates to FY '23. And we also received $23,308.04 in August of this fiscal year, fiscal '24. In accordance with the guidelines that we receive from the Department of Revenue, these funds were required to be recorded as general fund revenue in FY '23, with closing that out to free cash and with a further future appropriation vote required by town meeting to remove it from free cash. A free cash certification was made on 9/27/23, back last September, and at which time our fall town meeting warrant was already closed, so we didn't have the ability to bring that forward at the fall town meeting. In May 2023, the Annual Town Meeting voted to establish by an affirmative vote the creation of a general fund opioid stabilization account for all future proceeds to be deposited. The town utilized that account with the receipt of $23,000. It's currently sitting into that account, which we received on August 23. The remaining funds of $134,000 and change still needs to be voted by a vote of town meeting and transferred to a new special revenue account that DOR recently allowed to be established in December of 2023, roughly a month and a half ago. That did not exist before. That being said, that gives the town some flexibility to move the money out of the stabilization account, to vote it out of free cash, put it into this account without further appropriation from town meeting, so we can expend it as required and establish in terms of eligibility requirements for use of these funds. The use of these funds can be considered by our school department, public health, public safety, AYFS, and we've had meetings on how to best utilize those funds. Those discussions will continue to take place with the preparation of bringing forward some warrant articles that would vote that money out at the May Annual Town Meeting. Once that is done, the town can then begin to expend the funds out of a special revenue account for programs in assisting our communities in dealing with the effects of opioid addiction and abuse. So we continue to have discussions. We will move forward. You will see those warrant articles come before you and the town warrant, at which time you can make a recommendation on the use of those funds.
Do board members have any questions?
Yes, I do. Do we expect to, so we receive money in fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24? Do we expect more funds to be coming in?
So these settlements vary in nature. Sometimes it's a payout over five years. There are some cases that have not been settled yet that we don't know what the value of that amount will be coming to the town. We do have to report quarterly. Is it quarterly or annually?
Annually.
Annually to the state on how we're expending those funds.
Okay.
So there are requirements that we have to follow. There are requirements we have to adhere to in terms of consideration of expense of those funds, all of which we are discussing on an ongoing basis.
Thank you.
There. Absolutely.
Just one quick one. So we've received one, we'll say just 134.3. Have we spent any of this money, or is this money waiting to be spent?
So we have not spent any of it because under the old guidelines, it would require a vote of town meeting in order to appropriate from those funds once our free cash was certified. So now that it's been certified, and actually the rules have changed since then, which gives us more flexibility to consider use of those funds without town meeting appropriation, we're gonna start expending those funds in the near future.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you so much. We're moving along to tabled items. We have non-membered items. We have a request from Mr. Carpenter.
Yes, so we know that April will be here before we know it. And last year, we did vote to designate a member to coordinate. I am happy to do it unless somebody else would like to coordinate. It is the board's event, but as when Mrs. Jacobson was here and Mr. Kasonovich last year also, his first year as manager has been instrumental in making this a success. So I'm happy to do it, but I would need a vote from the board to... But if somebody else would like to take it over, I would step back or help them if they would like.
Okay, I make a motion that the select board select Mr. Carpenter as our member to coordinate with town administration for the volunteer appreciation event.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Now we have our second public comment period. So if you have signed up, I will give you just a few more minutes. If you haven't signed up and you would like to sign up...
I don't know who's signing up.
I know there's quite a few people left, and I want to make sure everybody gets heard.
Put your name on here.
Okay.
Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
So as a reminder, our public comment period has a three-minute limit. If you need additional time, you can request additional time from the board. So I'm just gonna go down the list. Is Amy Case available? You can come up here, or you can at the podium, wherever you're most comfortable.
Good evening, esteemed members of the board. My name is Amy Case, and I am a resident of American Mobile Park, located at 751 Washington Street, and I am a current employee at WPI in Worcester, where I have worked for 10 years, helping to put our students on a path that would hopefully help them avoid what we are currently facing today. I stand before you urging to consider the implementation of the rent control law that would safeguard the well-being of all community members. Our community is diverse, comprising both renters and homeowners, with the majority falling into the latter category. Unfortunately, we have all been adversely affected by the exorbitant rent increases imposed on us by Parakeet communities, as you are well aware. A significant portion of our residents consist of elderly, retired, and disabled individuals, many of whom are living on a fixed and limited income. These rent hikes have placed an immense burden on our community, forcing residents to make difficult decisions between paying inflated rent and meeting their basic needs. It leaves us grappling with the choice of paying our bills, affording groceries, purchasing necessary medications, and leaving very little remaining after rent is paid. Some of our neighbors have been part of this community for over 30 years. Others intentionally chose to move here, seeking a downsizing and more comfortable life during their retirement. Unfortunately, the current situation has disrupted the peace and stability they have anticipated in their golden years. Living under the constant threat of steep rent increases has turned our daily lives into a precarious balancing act. The most basic of necessities, such as heating oil during the winter months or timely garbage collection, become uncertain, leading to increased stress and anxiety among our residents. We find ourselves living on eggshells from month to month, grappling with these uncertainties. Will we have enough heating oil to endure the winter? Will the trash be promptly collected before our community is overrun by rodents? These are the questions that plague our minds regularly. We believe that enacting the rent control law is not just a matter of financial fairness, but a crucial step towards preserving the dignity and quality of life for the members of our community. We trust that you will carefully consider our plea and take the necessary steps to protect the well-being of the residents of American Mobile Home Park, Whispering Pines, and the like. Thank you for your attention, and we look forward to a positive resolution.
Thank you for your comments. The next person is Mark? Raymond. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, actually, I didn't have anything planned to speak about this evening, but then I heard the attorney from Parakeet. It sounded like it was a veiled threat to the town of Auburn to bring litigation, okay? Now, you have to be shocked over that, but we've grown accustomed to that because we're threatened all the time by Parakeet, with the threat of eviction. And I don't know if the lawyer's still listening, but that threat of eviction is illegal. They're misrepresenting the eviction laws, okay? The eviction laws of a manufactured home community to get us to sign a lease. Unless we sign that lease, we were gonna be evicted, which, again, is a misrepresentation of the law, the eviction laws. So like I said, we're used to threats, and we've been putting up with that for quite some time now, okay? So Wendy was, Wendy, I'm going to the previous manager of the park. She was the onsite manager. And her mantra was, we're a corporation, and we can do anything we want. Somebody would ask her to lower the rent, and that would be her response. Just trying to get her on the phone was a futile activity because she just wouldn't answer her phone. So, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of problems with Parakeet's management and their management style. And all due respect to Attorney Love. If Attorney Love thinks they're gonna negotiate with him, they are not. Once they say something, that's it. Now, I got a list at home. I call it a master violation list, and it's just filled with 93A violations, one after the other. And you know what? They don't care. I took Parakeet to court to get a tree down. It took me two attempts before a judge, before I could finally get that tree down. And you know what? Parakeet never even showed up to that. I mean, it's just ridiculous dealing with this company. So in closing, I'd just like to say, I know what Parakeet does. I know how they operate. And, you know, the holy grail here is rent control. Attorney Love, I'm sure it's gonna do a great job for us. We might be able to get some of those increases down, but what about the next five years? I'm 66 years old. Now, I guess the average life of a male is, what, 77 maybe? So I got maybe 11 more years. So I'm looking at the next rental increases too, you know? So, you know, that's all I got to say. I didn't have anything prepared or anything like that, but the attorney from Parakeet made me upset. I just had to say that. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. It looks like the next is Gina? Joanna? Yes, sorry. Could you just give us your last name?
I'm sorry?
Your last name?
Markarian.
Okay.
Good evening. I would like to say to anybody that represents Parakeet that your rental agreement is not legal. It's not provisional. It provides no information except... It provides no information, except that they're going to go up $100 a month for the next five years. That means at the end of five years, we will be paying $12,000 a year per unit to live on that property. That's over a half a million dollars profit from Parakeet. I find it insensitive. You know, I live next door to a woman. She couldn't be here tonight because she has multiple sclerosis. Her husband is dying of kidney cancer. She owns a lovely little unit, and she'll have to be put out because she can't afford your rent increases. And where is she going to go? In somebody's basement. I also have a gentleman who I spoke with who says, "I can't afford $1,000 a month rent because I'll have to put myself to sleep." You know what that means? Take his own life. And if you want to know, I'm 83 years old. In five years, I'll be 88 years old, and I'll be threatened with eviction from my home if I can't afford your $1,000 a month rent. Do you think that a judge, and I'll go to housing court, and do you think a judge is going to put out in the street an 88-year-old woman just to satisfy Parakeet? And not only that, I'm going blind, slowly, but I'll be blind in less than five years. And I have nowhere else to go but to live where I'm living. And your rent increases are unreasonable and they're unlawful because you have no provision in your agreements of what in God's name I'm paying for. And that's all I have to say. You're sickening.
Thank you so much for your comments. Next is David Jorgensen.
Good evening. I'm at 751 Washington Street. I'm a retired vet. I just had a massive heart attack December 20th. I come home to no heat. Three days, no heat. Imagine you guys having a massive heart attack, on medication, coming home to no heat at all, and then having your electricity shut off, not by the electric company, but because Parakeet does not take care of their property. Okay, it took them eight months to empty the septic tank. Do you know the environmental they failed? Okay? Wendy misrepresented the money that she was supposed to be paying the vendors. She owed the oil company five grand. That's why they weren't delivering oil to us. They haven't even paid the snow plow remover from last year, not this year, last year. They haven't even paid the landscaping people, okay? They don't even owe any money on the property. The property is already paid for. So all they're doing is collecting profit from us, okay? I received $1,080 a month. That's it. They went up to $13.45 on my rent. Number two, they did not give us a 30-day notice. By law, you're supposed to notify their tenant 30 days prior to raising the rent. They did not give us 30-day notice, and they went beyond that after hours. They snuck around at nighttime, pinning a letter to our door. We did not get emails, phone calls, nothing of notification of any rent increase. And when I talked to Wendy, the so-called manager who was fired for misleading funds, she did not tell me that the rent was going up after I paid her the rent. And then they put a $75 more on top of my rent because they say I was late with my rent. My rent's automatically taken out on the 15th. They don't, they don't take it out until the 18th. I get a constable at my door two days before Christmas. I get another letter from the courthouse saying I owe four grand in damages. What damages? I live there still. I go down to the courthouse, okay? I have a heart condition, and I go all the way to the courthouse. The clerk goes, "Why are you here?" I say, "I was told to report to court. Here's the summons. I owe four grand for damages, and I like to know what damages when I'm a tenant still of the property." They go, "Oh, that was dismissed on the 18th. Then why was I not informed?" Okay? Wednesday, this Wednesday, I'm going in for heart surgery. God forbid I survive, because if I survive, I am going to speak up for every single resident of Whisper Pine and Washington Street on this rent control. You've got migraines in apartments paying no money at all for rent. You put a cap on the housing because you want immigrants to have a place for the winter. What about us? What about the retired vets and the elderly and the disabled? Would you like for us to be living in your backyard? No, you wouldn't. Would you like to have someone come to you and say, "Oh, by the way, your home, we're going to take it away from you because we gave you an increase in your thing and you didn't pay it. So we're going to take your home. Where are you guys going to be? In the street, just like the rest of us." What Parakeet is trying to do is force us to move so they could sell the unit. They do not want to rent the units anymore. They do not want the responsibility of fixing anything that goes wrong. Once you buy that unit, all responsibilities are on the owners of the new unit, not Parakeet. Okay? As long as we're renting, they have to provide us with services, and they have not provided us with no services at all, okay? Wendy was fired. The other manager was fired. They had two other workers that lasted a week before they quit. They had a maintenance guy there. He quit. They have a maintenance guy there now. He's useless, I'm sorry to say, but I wouldn't trust him to wire a refrigerator, okay? And then, to top it all, I had the board of health come down to my house and take pictures because I wasn't going to put up with having no heat for three days. And then when they finally got the heat on, they didn't have the guy to prime it. So therefore, I was out again for two more days without heat. And then I had to wait three days for an electrician to come and fix the electric on the panel, okay? So I'm telling you, Parakeet is just for profit. They're not there for the people. They're not there to work with us. They send us an email saying, "If you have a problem with your rent, talk to us, we'll help you." When I talked to Wendy, Wendy said, "You have a choice. You either move or pay."
Thank you so much for your comments. Then Beth?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Could you give me your last name?
Margaret.
Okay.
I did.
Yeah, sorry.
I have to clarify something, first of all, with all the speakers. Some of us own our homes, some of us rent. The ones who own pay a lot rent, and that's primarily at Whispering Pines, which I'm representing them. I have a paper here. But the other, it's just as dire situation in the other ones who rent, but I don't exactly know their situation. But I do know that Joanne, who spoke, I don't know where she went, she was from Whispering Pines and talking about being an owner. But anyway, I can't really speak as well. I have a cold, and I'm wondering if, under the direction of Attorney Love, he said to ask if I can present this to you in written form instead of reading it or speaking it, would that be all right?
Sure, we can accept it in written form.
Okay, thank you. And it's self-explanatory, shouldn't be any misunderstanding, but it's quite a dire situation. Do you want me to just pass them out? How do you want me to do this? I can pass them down. Thank you.
Yeah. Is this the letter?
Multiple copies.
Thank you. Thank you.
The situation is dire, and that will completely explain what's happening with Parakeet, and this has never happened before. We've never had a real problem before. Everyone expects rent increases. These are astronomical, and they're making our properties unsellable at the same time. Literally, there's going to be 100 people out on the street if this isn't remedied. So I advocate for Attorney Love. Hopefully, he can get the ball rolling and maybe get some rent increase control. And that's about all I can say for this, at this time.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you. And feel free to contact me or the writer of this wants to be anonymous for now, if that's allowed.
Certainly, yes.
But you can contact me with any questions. Shall I leave my number with you?
Do we have it?
I don't think I left, put it on the paper.
You can put it on the paper if you'd like.
Yes. I'd be happy to.
I do just want to make a final, is there anybody else that would like to make a public comment? Okay, so in our packets, we have the January 8th meeting minutes. Are there any corrections? All right, seeing none, I will accept them as read. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much.